It's almost time, man.
Should I give this to you?
Oh, I didn't just take it. This is for next... You have two more minutes, man. You have two more minutes.
You should have stopped.
No. I saw that. I'm like, hey, Dave.
Brad?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
I'm like, why do you just come in? Probably because he's especially everywhere in school.
He was major courses.
The chief of personally going to all changes.
Yeah, they're pretty.
You should have stopped.
No. I forgot what.
I saw that.
I'm like, hey, Dave.
Brad?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
I'm like, oh, the October 17th, 2011. We have work session for the board's reprisal of commissions order, please. So, Burton, please call Roper.
Mr. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
I appreciate it. So, all present in county forward, thank you all for being here today. The first item on the agenda, citizen comments. Now, after citizen comments, we have discussion items with the city employees regarding compensation, longevity, promotion, and personal policies. And then discussion items on, will be also include garbage issues. So, if we have any citizens here, other than, we're all citizens, but I mean, just here, other than employees who wants to be making this discussion. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next discussion item. And the, as I mentioned, discussion with city employees regarding compensation, longevity, promotions, and personal policies. Now, this is my first experience in the council. The commission has made a decision back by this month or so that during work sessions, that you change, if I'm sitting up there, come down here with, feel more comfortable talking to people. And I personally appreciate that. They had already done this once, I missed at least one meeting with them. But, going back to requests, if you want to get into a discussion, if you would, would you please maybe come up to the central front. I have these hearing aids. Acoustic, not the best in the world. Something, I'm not comfortable doing this. So, if you don't mind, if you do that, or if you do not want to do that, if you would, you speak up. And don't be offended if I ask you to repeat yourself. All right? So, pretty much, is there some employee that'd like to come up and have, no, last Saturday, we had, I think, about three employees. I think most were speaking.
I'd like to speak, I'll again.
Would you please, would you come up here and identify yourself?
No, I'm a red graphic, I was a fighter now, one, I mean, that's about eighteen-plus years. Again, I'd like to address the longevity, sorry, I didn't watch your own attention. It does take them around, and me as a citizen and as employee in the city, I'd like to run your day, allow me to work for the city. But, if we, I'd like you all to take a look back at the longevity, we have a different commission. I've been through several commissions as being an employee here. If we can't get to three back, get something really close to it, because it does take them around. Why does a person want to stay here? You're never going to get a raise. Basically, you hire people, you can't promise them raises, you have no idea. We didn't know the economy was going to get like this. However, I think you all need to take a look back at the longevity, either give us the longevity, that is, eighty percent, or give us the two percent, something really close to it. You all are looking at the merit system. I had the joy of working for a merit system for five years. To me, it didn't work. Out of the five years, we got raises. Again, they said the economy, I worked at the university for five years, out of the five years, we had a merit system. We did not get a raise for three. We evaluated, and that was it. So, again, I'm asking the commission to look back at this longevity, because it's very important to my retirement, everybody's retirement, because I've seen firemen leave, police would leave. Because why stay if your retirement's going to stay the same? There's no reason. You can retire for what you have and go and get another job. So, again, I'm just asking the commission just to take a look back at it. Thank you.
I'm sorry to be late. Did you ask who wanted to speak, or?
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm just sitting. Is this the place where you?
You want to hear from anybody you want?
Well, I didn't know people had already asked.
Okay, would you, okay, would you please come over?
My name's Robert Engel, I'm the inspection supervisor. And on a lighter note, by being up with the property maintenance code, I'm going to have to write the city up for this whole backyard of America, we got a body upstairs. So, we need to, we need to get that checked out as soon as possible. Now, with that saying, Fred, I'm going to put you in charge of that, okay? Now, what I would like to talk about, I'm not going to get on to the longevity, because I'm sure you all have heard everything about the longevity. My thing is about this performance-based evaluations. For the last, well, I know the last five years, we have had an evaluation that we've always done in our department, and we've always been told this is coming, it's coming, and it's never been here. It was my understanding, it was supposed to have started last year, and this was going to be the pilot year for it. Now, I see it's going to be another, or another year later. And those things, they don't work right. Now, no matter how well you try to do it fairly, you're going to have employees that just automatically get along with the director, and employees that don't. And if you're one of those that don't, you're going to be in trouble, because it's not going to be a fair-based thing simply because a lot of personal, you know, personal stuff gets involved in that. And I know in my own department, you know, I've got people that I'm really close with, everybody in my department. So, it's going to be hard not to give them all the best evaluation that I can. And I've been a supervisor here for almost ten years. And the evaluation that we have was made by my director, which was Gary Miller, because I don't think the city ever had one officially. And we have done it, and then we give it to the city manager, and he signs off on it, and it's put in your file. This personnel thing that we have is not worth the paper it's written on. You have an intermediate grade when you start, mid-grade, and a top grade. There's no rules or regulations there as to how you get from one to the middle to the top. I've been here, like I say, a supervisor for ten years, I'm still not even up to my mid-grade grade salary. And I'm sure there's a lot of other ones that could say the same thing. There's no formula for it as to how you get there. And if you read it, it puts all of the decision-making in the city manager, HR director, and finance director. Those three should not be the ones that makes all the decisions about what, who's going to get a promotion, what their pay grade should be, and how they get promoted. They, and this is just personally speaking, you can read that thing and tell that it was designed for those three at that time to take control of everything that was going on in the city, employees and everything else. We have asked repeatedly, how can you get these steps? Nobody can answer that question. I find that pretty hard to believe. We've got HR director, he can't give us no direction on that. Somebody ought to be able to tell how you get evaluated to where you can get to the next step, and nobody can do that. They can't give you a clear answer on anything. And so, I think that's something that you all need to really look at. And we, as employees, whether we're supervisors or we're not, you know, we're striving out here to make the city the best that we can, and yet, it seems like everything around us is going up except where we're at. We're not asking for these great big handouts all the time. I mean, you know, you compare our salaries to what they're making around in the counties around us, they said they'd done a study, that didn't happen. I can tell you, I can take you to Lexington, I can take you to Georgetown, I can take you to Lawrenceburg, and look at the salaries compared to what mine is, as compared to what those people in those positions are, and they're fifteen to twenty thousand dollar higher than what I'm making. And like I say, this thing is not a fair thing, and the personnel policy is terrible, and it needs to be really looked at, and to see where we can, we can help the employees here. Okay? Thank you all very much. And what else?
My name is Steve Sutton, I've been with the city police department, police department for almost sixteen years. I'll kind of touch on two things, and then I'll get out of here for about a week. I'll go back to longevity, it was in place when we got here, we were told we were going to get it, there's a rating incentive to keep us here. I think, Mr. No One said it, the retirement back in July, they had one hundred and twenty-seven years of service or something left in one commission meeting, you know, when all those guys were, you're not going to see that anymore, because people aren't staying. I'm telling you, longevity is part of the reason. It's especially drastic, I'm not discounting any of the positions or departments, but you look at police, fire, that require additional training to get hired, it's not just, you get hired start tomorrow. When you start losing those longevity, for whatever the reason, you get shorthanded. And it takes forever, and it's more expensive to keep retraining those employees. If you retain good employees, as it's proven, it is cheaper than starting with a new employee tomorrow and just going in and out the door. We've seen guys leave the sheriff's department, which I can't believe. We've seen guys go to agencies smaller than ours, used to be Louisville, Lexington, we lose them there. Now, we're losing them to smaller agencies. There's something wrong, and longevity is part of it. Next question is, if we go to the merit system, it's like an answer, you know, a question or answer, is it going to be a citywide evaluation system? Like Mr. Engel said, the police department has an evaluation system. Will we use ours, or is there going to be a citywide system? Anybody answer that one for me, or do they know? Would it be a different?
I don't think we've had a proposal really given in black and white, unless somebody else has an answer approach to it.
The reason I'm quite concerned for that is, we're rated on driving, our nod, our job, our, you know, we have skills, you know, how are we going to compare that to somebody who doesn't drive a car? You know, we're out here eight hours a day driving in all kinds of weather, all kinds of speeds, we have a wreck, we may get knocked down, we've lost our rates. Somebody sits inside, they're going to rate it in the job driving, you know, I think it needs to be the same evaluation system, if it's done. I still believe longevity is the best answer to put back in place to keep employees here. You're not going to see, like I said, thirty-year employees, twenty-five-year employees anymore here, and keep seeing them lost. My next concern is kind of touching back to Robert's pay scale grading. Over the years, we've kept adjusting the starting pay. We've raised it, we've raised it, make it competitive, and it is. But the problem is, the in-between pay, it becomes stale. You're stuck. Once you get six, seven, eight, ten years vested, you can't stop and leave your job and go somewhere else most of the time. You got a family or et cetera. You're stuck at that, like the in-between mid-grade or whatever you call it. I'm not speaking just because I'm a supervisor, but what I've seen is, when you do get promoted, the raises, since we've raised the starting pay, we hadn't raised any other, I can tell you, for instance, just for the police department only, if you're, got three or four years on, get promoted to sergeant, you get about a dollar, roughly a dollar an hour raise. You're going from your own responsibilities yourself, now you're technically responsible for fifty, because of how many people you have, and technically you're their supervisor, and you get a dollar an hour raise. So, I'd like for that to be looked at as well. My last concern is with the new promotion process, maybe the ordinance, they didn't help, but a one percent raise in for employees who get promoted after they complete probation. I didn't get that, never have, now I've been promoted twice. Now, you're telling me that employee gets tomorrow, is going to get his, like, since sergeant, it's six percent, six months later, he gets one percent, that's seven. I got six. You go lieutenant, you get nine. I got nine. Next person comes in, he gets tomorrow, he gets ten. I think we need to look at that. I don't know why, I'll probably go back, or et cetera, I think it's kind of wrong for somebody to come in, pretty much make what I'm making or maybe even more. Like I said, and especially patrolmen, there's no, if you're a sergeant or a, there's patrol officers who are making as much money as supervisor, or even more. And I don't see how you can tell me that I can directly responsible for that person, but I'm making less money than they are. There's something wrong with that number. That's all I got.
I'll be real quick, I'll just give it to you briefly, just a minute. I'm with county chief, Fire Department. Essentially, what that is, is the retirement savings from, essentially from me, the, since I've taken the promotion of a county chief, roughly, that'll show, I'm making roughly over ten thousand a month. Pay stubs attached, same thing, it's comparison with a cap when we just promoted. The fire chief, I've talked with him, Randy Donahue, this is more of a, where he, he raised it as an opportunity time to inform you, and there's something working coming to you all. So, unless you all had questions, that's essentially it. And also, maybe expanding on the officer, I'm saying, that, that one percent add-on is closing that gap, not for better, but it's increasing the pay of younger guys coming up through, bringing it closer to what your administrators do. Any question?
to print out the nice sheets that I had for all of you. Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie Brandlidge, okay, Parks and Rec. So, unfortunately, I was able to open my notes on my cellphone, so forgive me if that's rude, but, and I'm going to email you all, so you don't really have to take notes exactly what, what this, this says. I don't know if you've had any other, because I had a program Saturday, so I don't know if you've had any other part-time people, but, once again, I sit here as a part-time person and wish that I had to worry about my retirement and my vacation pay, because I don't get any of that, you know. Okay, but, anyway, first of all, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to come and express concerns, and make suggestions, and be listened to, which is pretty cool. Also, I've been with Parks and Rec five and a half years now, and I have seen lots of growth and positive, exciting things happening, and I'm, I'm glad to be a part of that. But I'd say that also has a lot to do with why I'm here today, because I think that particularly the Parks Department is experiencing growing pains, because so many new things have, have been going on, and I'm sure you all are aware of that, in the last few years. But I think we are either sticking our head in the sand, or whatever, we're not addressing those growing pains. And my very first concern, and I'll be honest, this has a lot to do with me, okay? There are no job descriptions. I hear these folks talking about startup grade, medium grade, if you come into the Park Department as a part-time person, that's what you are, a part-time person. And everybody starts at somewhere between minimum wage and maybe eight dollars after five and a half years. I'm up to eight dollars and fifty-seven cents an hour with no benefits, and the ladies who check out my purchases at Right Aid make eight dollars and fifty-seven cents an hour with benefits. It's my understanding that not, that isn't consistent or representative of the way all of the departments within the city operate. For example, the transit people, if they have a part-time bus driver, they don't offer him eight dollars an hour. He makes something equivalent, he has a CDL, to what the full-time people do. And I think that that is something that needs to be addressed. I also think if we had job descriptions within our department, might give us a little better handle on how we could maybe trim some fat, if we knew, you know, how many maintenance people does it take to do this park? How many supervisors do you need? And then, I know that we have a fairly generous budget, so maybe we could spread it even farther, which would be pretty neat. My job requires certain skills, I have a college degree, I'm an environment certified, environmental educator, I'm in continuing education training for naturalists and interpretive planning. I'm responsible for the safety of the public who comes when I lead them on hikes and explore the wildlife, and, you know, keeping, we picked up a big snake yesterday, that was really fun, but, we, we had to be careful. I had to have hand sanitizer there. Nobody tells me this, it's just something I know in this job that I need to be aware of. When I need to bring in another educator, which I do occasionally, to help me or facilitate a program, that person is paid an equivalent of twenty dollars an hour or more, and without all of that responsibility. This is not going to be popular, but another way I would suggest, since you're never going to make more full-time positions, another way to bring some parity for part-timers in the parks would be to give them the opportunity to occupy the residences, the dwellings that sit on some of the park properties. And that's a win-win, because there's no additional cash payments as long as they have some responsibilities, like the trash and, and security and so on, that requires their presence on the property. That's a big difference from somebody that just goes and locks up at East Frank or, or goes and, you know, locks up, that, okay. So, they could live rent-free, it wouldn't affect the, your pension program and all that, wouldn't cost you anymore. Any full-time employee works there and say, maybe works in the downtown division full-time, but he's also living in a dwelling, if it isn't being, that all needs to be reported to the Internal Revenue, because that's not a condition of his employment. Okay, anybody could come and lock the gates. And I want to be first on the list to live in one of the parks. There are some other little things. The arbitrary ninety-nine-dollar hours a month, eleven hundred and eighty-eight a year, that was arbitrarily imposed on part-timers, and we had to sign a document saying that we would not work more than ninety-nine hours a month. We couldn't even average that, a hundred and ten one month and eighty-five. Mr. Donahue said that that was to comply with the Kentucky statutes regarding retirement and pension funds. And I would ask that you all look up that statute, which says that a part-time employee is someone who works less than twelve hundred hours a year, which would be eleven ninety-nine point nine, with an average of just under a hundred hours a month. That costs me a hundred dollars a year, and that may not be much to some of you all, but that's like three months of my cable, and everything around me is going up, but somebody else said that, I'm not. I'm not going to comment on the, the merit raises and so on, because I think that's pretty much been covered. I sure hate it if one person had the chance to see whether I could have a raise or not. You guys know me, I would be, I would be in trouble. So, I, now, I would like to end on a humorous note, if you will each take one of these, and if you will each take one or two of these. That's an article from Sunday's newspaper about a resort in Virginia called The Homestead. They have a naturalist there who leads hikes and does a lot of the things I do here, they charge people thirty-one dollars to go on these hikes. So, if they take ten people, they just took in three hundred and ten dollars. And I bet that guy makes more than eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. And one of the things he does, and I'm all nervous, so it's probably not going to happen, is teach them. Did you hear that? That's an acorn whistle. He teaches them how to do an acorn, whistle with an acorn, and I'm not very good at it, but, so, you all can practice that. And again, I just thank you for the opportunity to come here and address these things, and I sure would like to have a job description and be paid appropriately. I think if you had to replace me, you wouldn't find anyone as qualified or who does what I do. And I love what I do, and that's why I'm still here, because I probably make as much being a Walmart greeter.
Hello, and my name is Roseanne, I'm supervisor, I've been here since 2007. Thank you for having us this afternoon. Mostly what I'm going to just talk about very briefly is compensation policy. And part of it is, I'm, I'm sitting here very perplexed based on some policies that were made earlier this year on the health care, in light of a budget surplus that we, as employees, got settled with, you know, even equivalent level here, health care, how to pay more for it, even though it turned out there was more money. So, but that's what it is. What I'd like to see is no further changes to that, I'd like to see no, no changes to the dental plan.
Chief Wood?
No, no other changes to the dental plan in terms of higher premiums or taken away, because I know, seems like that comes up for discussion every year, so. So, that, given what it is, on the compensation part, I was looking back through the changes that were adopted in 2010, and this has, I'm not sure if you all are aware, but, as I was thumbing through it, there's a number of positions that were upgraded, pay grades, sometimes ten or more pay grades, a significant number of people, and some of them were already very high in the food chain. So, that saddled with the no, very little cost of living increase or none, and no longevity has really hurt people at my level.
Hello, and my name is Roseanne, I'm supervisor. I've been here since 2007. Thank you for having us this afternoon. Mostly what I'm going to just talk about very briefly is compensation policy. And part of it is I'm sitting here very perplexed based on some policies that were made earlier this year on the health care in light of a budget surplus that we, as employees, got settled with, you know, even equivalent level here, health care, having to pay more for it, even though it turned out there was more money. So, but that's what it is. What I'd like to see is no further changes to that. I'd like to see no, no changes to the dental plan.
Chief Wood?
No, no other changes to the dental plan in terms of higher premiums are taken away, because I know, seems like that comes up for discussion every year, so. So that, given what it is, on the compensation part, I was looking back through the changes that were adopted in 2010, and this has, I'm not sure if you all are aware, but as I was spilling through it, there's a number of positions that were upgraded, pay grades, sometimes ten or more pay grades, a significant number of people. And some of them were already very high in the food chain. So, that saddled with the no, very little cost of living increase or none, and no longevity has really hurt people at my level, so it's not competitive for me to stay here. So, what's, I would like to have, ask the City Cushion News to look at the current policies. Some of my colleagues had said about the low, mid, and high range, to look at how is that implemented? Bring back the longevity, the cost of living, the two percent that we're going to get in, in, let's see, in January is going to put us back to zero where we started with the health care change. So, I think a new, new way of looking at compensation, starting just with the basic things, really if you could place, if you want your employees to stay. And then the last thing I have to say is about the performance pay. I was on Employee Advisory Committee maybe a year ago, and we discussed should we implement that. And the employer that I used to work for before Community Kentucky, actually we had, it was called Ameripane, and it's really dependent on having the supervisors give very good, clear direction. It can work, but if the supervisors do not give clear performance measurements to the employees, then it does become very arbitrary. But we didn't go around saying, well, did you get yours, did you not get yours? It was, the people that were performing knew it, and they got a five percent raise. It was one time, and it could be taken away from you if you didn't perform. But I think most people that's here, if you held the carrot and said, here's five percent, but this is the standard you have to meet, you know, what, how would things change inside how we're doing business here? I think that would be a great limitation, so. And I've shared some ideas with Randy, and I actually have my human resources person send him the employee evaluation form, so it's really not very complex. And I'd be happy to discuss it further, if you have any more input on that.
No, no, but I, I'm Charlotte Nelson. I only wanted to question that possibly later, as I know this is going to be lengthy, and rightfully so, it's an issue that's important to all. But after that's over, I believe you're going to discuss more on the garbage issue. And I'm hoping that after we hear what the, some of the questions that have been asked over the last week have been answered by the commission, that then the citizens that maybe endure this all or come back later can have a chance then to make a comment or ask additional questions at a later time today. I know this, comments are early and action is later, so. Well, that's, I realize that, but I believe that there's a great deal to be discussed about the employee issues and that down the road, it might be more time-effective to, I mean, not to ask the questions out, because you may answer them for me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ellen Walden. I'm an inspector in the planning and building budgets department. Personally, I've talked to the commissioners about the morale, which has to do a lot, which you've already heard about, longevity, no raises, you know, contracts have been broken. You come do this for me, I'm going to, I'm giving you your insurance, I understand that the economy has changed. However, I've been here eighteen-plus years, and I have a lot of knowledge, not just in my job, as my coworkers do as well, because I am a face that they see outside. I was in finance for eleven years. I know a little bit about each department. I personally, I'm trying to get the heck out of here, because you guys aren't, I'm not getting anything. So I'd rather buy, I bought an air, air, one year of airtime, twenty-five months of time when I was young and stupid, didn't think about retirement, I bought that back. I've completed my 401K, so I can get out of here, because this is the worst I have ever seen and believed in. I've seen a lot of bad blows, so I appreciate your time.
Jackson Perdell, Fire Department. Talk about insurance, mainly the deductible plan. When we had the forums back in May or June about it, some questions were brought up about waiving the city money and just paying the twenty-five dollar a month charge to be on the plan and not taking a dime from the city, and being responsible on your own for the initial four thousand dollars of that plan, if you're not familiar with it, as a family plan. And at the time, it was said it was going to be looked into. And it was looked into, and it was determined that it's legal, that you can waive the monies, but it's not being offered, because they don't, they don't want to make it enticing for the employees to go to that plan, because you can go outside of here and pick up extra money to put towards your insurance, it's still not really costing you nothing out of pocket, and you're waiving a thousand from the city. But it's putting the city at risk after that four thousand dollars for being liable for it. This was discussed, I'm also a member of the Employee Advisory Committee, this was discussed in there most recently, and it was a, and that was the reason, you know, because it leaves you all open for exposure, but, you know, most citizens are looking for anywhere they can save money. We're not looking for, you know, anything, you know, not wanting nothing, we're wanting a way to keep your money for the first thousand, and then after you spend that four, you know, to get to that point, it's had to be something pretty, an intent of some sort that's going to have to require surgery to make, to meet that. My second part is, what do you all tell possible hires when they come in here? You know, what can you offer them? You can't offer them a raise, because nothing's, you know, nothing's definite. The insurance is getting priced extremely high, you know? Those are the things that brought me here seven years ago. I came dollar for dollar just for the insurance. You know, that's the ones now, you know, these new guys that, you know, come in, it's like, you know, and I know the job market's horrible, but, you know, there's nothing else, you know, you're coming into a place where you're not guaranteed anything except the next twenty-five years of your life being here for this amount of money. And the merit-based racism in the Employee Advisory Committee, we were adamant, police and fire, do not do this. You know, how do you judge us? Lieutenant Sutton was saying, you know, ultimately, if we do our job correctly, we get to leave at the end of the day. That's a win. You know, any other alternative, you know, it's bad, it's a bad bet for us. But just think about it. Thank you.
Derek Hager, I'm the Police Department. I'm just going to speak from the Police Department side of things, I don't know what all the other departments do, what their job entails, but I do know the Police side of things. I want to talk about the merit-based evaluations and merit-based pay. When it comes to insurance and a whole lot of the changes, we've been compared to the state a whole lot of times, so I'm going to use that comparison. The state, of course, they do have a merit-based system, our own police officer. The state police, they do not have a merit-based system. I think there's a good reason for that. It's hard to quantify what we do as police officers. We have an evaluation system in place, but if, if it gets to where you start looking at numbers, I have no control over the amount of reports I take. I have, I have no control over what crimes are reported, what crimes aren't reported. I can tell you in over eight and a half years, just doing a routine patrol, I don't know how many crimes I've prevented, you can't put a number on that. With one arrest that I've made, I don't know how many more crimes that I've prevented from that one arrest. So we can't put those numbers on there. But the one place that we can say, okay, here are the numbers, is some self-initiated activity like traffic stops. Well, I'm the type of officer that I make a traffic stop to make, make sure that we maintain highway safety. Well, if anybody's ever taken a look at the Kentucky revised statutes, that book is about that fig with little tiny font, there's all kinds of crazy stuff in there. Luckily, police officers, we have discretion, so most of that stuff, it's what I call nickel and I'm charged, we don't mess with that a whole lot. But if we go to a system where they say, hey, look, guys, you all need to produce some numbers, we can produce numbers, but unfortunately, the ones that are going to suffer are the citizens, and we don't want that, that's terrible, that should never, ever, ever happen, that we feel like that we have to pull out all the stops and have an absolute blitz on traffic enforcement all the time so that we can get our numbers up and get raises. I'm not the type of person I'm going to do that, but there's some guys that's going to say, if that's what I have to do to get a pay raise, we're pulling out all the stops and everybody's getting tickets for everything. And that's going to, number one, that's going to hurt us in the eyes of the citizens. They're going to go sour on that stuff really quick, and I don't blame them, it's uncalled for, but people will do that if they think that their, their money is on the line. Also, if you get guys tied up, especially if we make a traffic stop after dark, it requires two officers for safety purposes. Now you've got two units tied up on each traffic stop, we're all going to be tied up, it's going to cause us to have increased response times when somebody does call and need the police, because we just can't in the middle of it say, hey, you know, wait right there, I'm going to take this call and I'll come back and finish tracking your ticket, you know? We have to wait until that's clear before we can go to the next thing. So our response times will increase, and also, just our normal patrol for crime prevention will decrease, because instead of us, you know, going around checking businesses at night and going to the neighborhoods, we'd pretty much be looking at our hotspots where we know I can sit here and I can write tickets all day long on this stop sign, I can write, you know, speeding tickets for ten over at this place all day long. And I don't think that it's the direction that we need to head as, as police officers, and I think that if we, if we say we have to have numbers, we might not intend for it to go that direction, but that's where it's going to go. And that's not going to be good for anybody. So I can't speak for everybody else, but from a Police Department standpoint, I don't think that merit-based evaluations and merit-based pay raises, that it really applies very well to us, just because of the way that it's set up. To me, it's a recipe for disaster all the way around. So I wish that you all would, would look at that, consider those things, do a little research on, on your own, maybe talk to the state police and see why they don't use that, because I just think that we're opening the door for problems that we don't need here.
Thanks everybody. Anyone else? Two comments along with those that were made Saturday, so similar, but City Manager, you take a lot of notes, back there, back to staff, I'm sure are taking some notes. Commission here is also likewise. Any Commissioner willing to make any comments before we move on?
I just want to thank everybody for showing up today, I really appreciate this, and you all have given us a lot to think about as we move forward over the next year and trying to improve the morale here at the city. I do know it's been hard, and I think we're all committed to trying, I know City Manager Goleman has said publicly that he's committed to improving morale here. We really are, this is the start of what I think should be a long conversation, and I know you guys expect many results, and we're going to get to work and try to, try to get the situation improved, but I think you all are picking time to come out and learn, so, thank you.
Any Commissioner Walter?
I can, I'll echo this, and it's, thank you all for coming out here and for, for sharing these concerns for this, we obviously can't address them until unless we hear them. I can, I can promise you all, I can't make many promises, but I can promise you all that no matter what we do, we're not going to make everybody happy. That's not even hypothetically possible. But we can listen to your concerns, we can take them into account, and we can do our best, our best to address those concerns. I think we've got, I think we've got plenty of time to take these concerns into account and, and make any potential changes by the time we pass the next budget, which will be next summer, so, thanks for sharing them, and we'll, the Commission will just pick this discussion up down the road and then discuss the next budget.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. Okay, now we're, we're losing everybody. Okay, now, we're now, as part of the agenda, that discussion of garbage issues, now I don't know where to start with this. Now, Mr.
Oh, yes, Mayor. Of course, the staff is progressing along the timeline to get the pleasure throw model implemented, and there have been, the frequently asked questions disseminated, and we've sent out all the, all the forms to the citizens to see what size containers that they would prefer, and we're getting a whole lot of feedback, and I've been working with Jeff daily on this, and Jeff Hackbar, our partner did, and we look forward to further discussing, you know, any guidelines that the Commission have. I think first, it might be good for us to talk about the timeline that would roll this out, and so, with no objection, I would ask Mr. Hackbar if he'd talk some about the timeline and what happens.
Well, we've been receiving the, the forms, they've been coming in, in the mail, and we have piles and piles of mail, and we're entering those people's addresses and names and what their order is in the PVA database, so we're currently working on that. They're due by this Friday, the 21st, so I anticipate having all the information entered into the system next week, the following week. I talked to Fred this morning about go ahead and getting the bid package advertised when Angie Dispenette comes back, she's off work, getting it advertised. And we have to advertise for a week, and, so we're hoping to get on the City Commission agenda in November, a bid award for all the cart orders. The question is, that's the 28th of November, if we're ready on the 14th of November at the work session, maybe calling a special meeting to award the carts, that would give us two weeks of extra time. And at this point, I don't, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be ready on the 14th of November to do a bid award, to get those carts ordered. So, that's where we are in terms of getting the request back. We're getting lots of calls from residents. The main one that is yard waste, instead of we'll pick it up for free, the residents would like to know if they could use their own old garbage cans and put their yard waste in garbage cans and not have to go out and buy the bags or the paper biodegradable bags, let's see, that's an extra expense. And so we haven't really told people yes or no, but wanted to have the conversation with you all today, and you all give us some feedback so we can follow up and call some of these residents back and say, this is what the plan is.
Yeah, I was, I was actually going to bring that up today. I think that makes perfect sense, I think it makes a lot of sense to use their own cans and put out there. And I always feel like that's a little easier for us and send out, we see the garbage market.
Commissioner Walter made a statement. Mr. Attorney.
I agree with that.
Have I told you this? Because, you know, if he's going to do something, he has to have these three people. Commissioner, can I?
I guess my, my question is that we have an innovative system, how that can be answered at this point? If it's not... Because it's not.
Well, we were going based off the frequently asked questions that addressed yard waste. And the frequently asked questions, it would be picked up at no charge. But it didn't specify the use of, like, can you use your own garbage can? What this said was, you can get overflow bags to put that waste in or you can fit it in the size of garbage can that you order. Those are the options kind of. Didn't really specifically say that, but inferred, but keep, because it wasn't answered directly. We get a lot of calls, what do I do with my old garbage can? We can recycle them or can they reuse those with yard waste? And I guess that wasn't specifically answered in this question there.
And Mayor, I'm not trying to be difficult, but the reason I'm saying it is we don't have an actual black and white proposal in front of us. And that's why I'm thinking it's difficult to sort of really keep up with what is being proposed because every meeting changes. And if there was a good proposal, maybe that would be easier to keep up with. I happily agree with what Commissioner may say. I don't know what changes he's talking about. I'll dispute that statement. But even though we've already set a lot of these parameters over the course of discussion over the past few months, we haven't, we haven't put all of that information in one place in one, even in formal document. So one thing that I was hoping we could do today is just pick through all of the known parameters that have already been set to answer questions like the one you're describing and to put all of that in, you know, to get all of that information put together. I mean, we've already, we've already discussed a lot of this stuff and already, already set a lot of these parameters, but we haven't, we haven't listed or not in one place where we can correct people to. Having said that, you know, the idea that we, the idea that we can't answer any of these questions without an enabler ordinance, that, I mean, that doesn't even make sense, does it? We can't, we can't make an enabler ordinance until we answer these questions. I mean, the idea that we have to put the law together and then decide what it says, that's not even hypothetically possible. We can only answer, we have to answer these questions before we make any. Commissioner, may I add one? This is quite, I wasn't trying to say we should actually pass a law first. I'm saying there's nothing, well, in legislative bodies, there's typically a written proposal at the spark, and then, then as you go through it, the draft would get changed as things change. And I was trying to say was, we don't, we don't have anything in black and white to even look at. The frequently asked questions page is, is one thing, but there's not been an actual draft ordinance proposed. For example, when someone in legislature introduces a House bill or a Senate bill or a bill request, a proposal, just to look at and just sort of move things around. So that's, that's what the point I was trying to make, that it hasn't gotten to the point where there's an actual proposal.
I think that's a fair point.
Yeah, that's really what I was saying, I wasn't trying to say pass a law first and then change. We'll just kind of get out there. Because when I said things are changing, just things are getting added and it's all sort of in everybody's mind.
It's getting up.
And if somebody puts something on, gets something on paper, then it would be.
Well, for a few points, this is your point. The reason I ask, to answer your question about have you feel about this? Two commissioners said yes. I'd like to, although we're not voting for him, I know he wants to go with the general consensus of the commission. As McDonald's on the east side, you know, the general group of people back there, yeah. So they started asking specific questions about the garbage, which I could not answer. I'm going to leave, you know, that I'm not really supporting the point of what we're doing right now. And the commission will be discussing that today. I'd just like, if this question, you should have asked you this question. If I'm asked that question, I'd like to feel, okay, you can do this with Commissioner. But if, if that's what the commission wants, I'm not, that's why I'm assessing it. I don't feel comfortable for Mr. Hackbar to be able to say explicitly to any citizen and ask you a particular question if you may come back and be criticized that you may, you did it out of betrayal. He has to understand what you're trying to do. But I just want to feel comfortable in itself.
I think everybody would be more comfortable. A lot of this stuff just got put down, put down paper in one place. And then, and then anybody who asks a question about anything to discuss, including, you know, anybody who misses any of these meetings or anything, who has something to refer to. But that is one very particular question that I had hoped to address.
Because people are trying to think about what size can to order.
Sure.
And if they can put that, you know, if they have to put that in the trash can, then they're going to have to think about whether to order a bigger can. Or if I can use my old can, then I can go with a smaller can.
Right. We definitely don't want to charge people to pick up yard waste. And so definitely don't want people putting the yard waste in the city provided trash cans or in the overflow bag, which means that we need to make the alternatives easy to use.
You know, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, I think Mr. Wilder makes a good, Mr. Wilder makes a good point that, you know, we need to make it as easy as possible with, you know, particularly the yard waste. I found that a number of people that I've talked to about the solid waste, the pay to throw program, that has been one of their primary concerns is the yard waste issue. You know, they don't like their yard waste blown all over the road or anything like that. And I'm kind of surprised because traditionally, most of the people that I've talked to, they put their yard waste in trash bags, which I would imagine probably has been picked up by, you know, in the central landfill in the past. So, you know, I am very supportive of doing the, letting them use the cans that they have for the yard waste. And I think that, I think that's a good compromise and something, you know. There's something to be said about, you know, this commission has discussed this issue for quite some time. And I told a lady the other day, I said, you know, we can't think of everything. And I said, you know, what's, what's good is that we're hearing back from the public and the public is saying, is asking questions that may not have been thought. And so I was unaware that throughout this community, that a lot of people, instead of laying their yard waste out on the street for the truck to come get it, they put it in bags and cans and they feel more comfortable with that. So I think that by addressing this and showing that this city commission is being responsive as we move forward in this process to try to, you know, bring compromises and, you know, answer and address people's concerns.
And I'm okay to talk about possible parameters of this, but I really want to know financially if this is going to be doable. If, if it's my understanding that we're getting 80% of people wanting the free trash cans, much less apartment complexes, is my understanding, or also wanting to go toward the free trash cans. I'm stuck wondering how financially this is going to work. Based on what we got before us, prior was all estimates, thinking maybe 25% of people would want the free cans. 50% would want the $4 cans. And 25% of the people would want the $12 cans. But it's my understanding that, that's not the feedback we're getting. Is that correct yet?
Majority of the, the forms are filled out where they would like both 35 gallon recycling and garbage.
Is it about, is it about 80%? Is that the?
I'd say 85, 80% and probably 15% to the 65. And that might go up because if you don't answer the questionnaire, you're going to get the default can size, which is 65 gallon. So right now, we don't know how many. Don't, haven't, are not intending to return there.
Roughly what response rate we've had so far? I mean, how many do you think have returned though?
I'd say 4,000.
4,000?
Well, I don't even know what 4,000 looks like, but there's a. We're getting stacks of mail coming in every day. And it just, to me, it seems like 4,000. But we'll have a better handle on where we are at the end of this week, as far as the number of responses. But it's coming in pretty steadily. And one thing we noticed, I showed Fred today, we had probably 500, 400 with return addresses where it's either the person has moved, the address was wrong on the PVA, address of who the owner is was incorrect, or just they put an avenue versus a drive on the end of the street thing and that was returned. And so in those cases, we don't have time to go back out and re-ask the question of what size. They'll have to receive the default can size if we don't give them information about it.
I'm sorry. I think there's. I think, I mean, I think there's potentially a couple of things going on here. If, if the majority of folks ask for the small free cans and actually limit their waste to those small cans, then even though we're not pulling in revenue off those cans, I mean, the purpose of the system might incentivize less waste more sometimes. So if folks are actually, I mean, if those are actually appropriate car sizes for households, then we've essentially achieved our goal in terms of realizing long-term costs in terms of, you know, decrease, in terms of the tail and the way that impacts tipping fees and recycling. So that's, I mean, there's an extent, it's, it's, you know, it's kind of funny. I feel like we're kind of okay regardless of which way things go. I mean, let's say things go according to our estimates, 25, 50, 25. We've obviously, we obviously planned for that. If the majority of folks want the smaller free cans and are actually just reducing that amount of waste, that's it. That means that the program is even more successful than we've anticipated and should result in long-term cost savings sooner rather than later. And if, if the program doesn't work the way we expected to, then lots of folks go for the large cans, which I don't expect to be the case. But if that were the case, then the silver lining would be that would at least raise plenty of healthy revenue. But I think, you know, I think it's okay if folks are filling in for us with small cans, assuming, assuming that those are actually appropriate can sizes for those households. Now, we've obviously, we've obviously discussed and budgeted for increased enforcement. And that's something else that, that's going to have to be relevant at some point, right? I mean, if folks are going to illegally dump it and try to find out who it is, whether it's a trash, that's something that's relatively easy to identify possibly.
Can I tell you, in terms of you just said, you know, that assumption that the person taking the small when you want to accomplish this waste. Now, I don't know that you can make that assumption, you know, and really support that totally. Just as, once again, last Thursday morning, I took my car out to a place that had a service. So I used a shuttle service coming from work. There were five of us in the shuttle. When someone recognized that I was the mayor, then immediately I had questions coming in about this issue. And three in the car said, it's a no-brainer. I'm going to take the smallest container because I don't have to pay anything. And said, but it's not enough to take care of my garbage. And she said, there's going to be people finding my garbage outside of their garbage cans in other places. I mean, that, I mean, that is a, that is a possibility.
I mean, you know, and I know you missed our last work session there, but Eric Burke came. Eric Burke came to our last work session and claimed that he was just going to take the small can. And he was going to, he was going to illegally dump all of the excess in our yards even. And I expect to be serious when they're hoping to do that. They're also going to be fine prosecuted.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying, you know, all I'm saying is that we can't really, I don't know how solid you want to stand on the assumption that this won't cut back, hoping it will. I think I'll pick this up. Mr. Minister.
Just want to ask a question to the solicitor coming in. If the addresses that were, the address, all the looks that were sent, the incorrect address, the post office rejected it because it said avenue instead of street or address. Is there a problem with that, just automatically with the city just saying you're automatically the default claim even though they didn't see, they didn't see the survey?
With that, from a legal perspective, frankly, I don't know. But from, I think, from a common sense, practical perspective, I think that the city has a duty to make additional efforts to notify those people. And if it's, if it's 500 people, you know, my recommendation, just so we can avoid the argument, later on down the road, if someone, you know, claims in some type of legal action that they didn't receive a notification, I think we just take a, make the effort to attempt to put a mailer or something on their door. I mean, these are all people in Frankfurt. I would assume probably 90 or 80% of them are in Frankfurt. Some of them may be out of town property owners. But to the extent that they, if you're in Frankfurt, I think it makes sense to give them notice by putting a hangar on their property so that, so that I can tell the court that, your honor, we did everything we could to do that. And we sent it to the address with the PVA as well as, as we do for property maintenance code violations, we actually posted the property. I know that's additional work, but I think it's, it goes back to the old an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I'm surprised the PVA address, the address that off, given that's where we send our tax bills. And everybody uses it to add us to the record to have that many errors. And then just the sample size, we saw from shock the number we received by.
Well, I guess that's about 10%, right?
Five hundred out of 10,000. So how many percent?
One thing I was going to suggest under parameters. This way now, according to parameters that are inside, folks get to downgrade their can for free and upgrade their can for $20. At least for the first year, I think between the community, we'd probably be better served by significantly reducing or even maybe upgrading. There's going to be growing things. And, you know, I realize that if folks are swapping out cans willy-nilly, that that'll have some potential to leave us with some surplus cans. But that would completely even out in the long run. Those cans, those surplus cans will be absorbed back into the, into the system over time. And any extra cans we end up with now are just cans we don't have to purchase purchased down the road and later. Folks, a lot of folks have talked about the 10-year lifespan of the cans. I'd just like to clarify that just about in every car manufacturer offers cans at a 10-year warranty. The cans lifespan, lifespan is actually much longer than 10 years. It's just a warranty that lasts 10 years. And so the replacements are guaranteed within 10 years. And then after that, that's when cities that have automated election and buy cans and cars expect a 5% to 10% replacement cost in their annual. But the can should last longer than 10 years and if they don't, they'll be replaced by a warranty. But if we, you know, if, if folks are underestimating right now, then if folks are underestimating right now and they start legally dumping, then, you know, that's, that's what the extra enforcement is there for. If folks are underestimating right now, realize that, not to upgrade, I think we should make that as easy for folks as possible.
Yes, Commissioner. Then I'd like to make a comment.
You know, that's an interesting point that Commissioner Wilder.
You know, that's an interesting point that Commissioner Wilder brought up in terms of, you know, I can understand the logic as to why, and has up to this point supported the logic of that, if we're incentivized to produce less, less waste, then we need to define in terms of, you know, how you can do from can to can, and, you know, use it as a reward to get down to the smallest can, possible can, and the biggest recycling and whatnot and whatnot. But, I, you know, there is a valid point in that since this, since the cans are so new and uncramped, there are a lot of communities out in, not only the state of Kentucky, but throughout the entire United States that use uniform cans. In fact, the county trash system uses, you're arguing, Frank County uses uniform trash cans, and the reason for that is, is pretty understandable. It helps automate the system, and you can save costs by doing that. But since this is a relatively new thing, particularly here in Frankfurt where people are not familiar, as familiar with the cans, there might be an idea worth exploring in terms of, of removing that, you know, charge to go up if you've made the wrong decision, you know, if you feel like you're producing more waste than, than what you thought you were, or something like that. So I, I would be certainly open to, to doing that.
My, let go. I'd like to make, you know, when we started here in Yale, we're supposed to be revenue at least trying to get as much coming in this year as we've been anticipating the last year, two years. I mean, with budgets, on the budget we passed, we had factored in, Mr. Dawson, please correct me if I'm wrong, the budget we passed in June had six hundred thousand dollars.
About fifty, about fifty.
Okay, well, okay, but it's, it's gonna be six hundred.
Right.
All right, so, so since, since we passed that budget, you know, we, we excused or we forgave it January to June, and we're not, then we're sitting up on technical thing from July to December, isn't that right? And so that's, so in the budget we passed, we're gonna be five hundred fifty thousand dollars short. I mean, that, I mean, that's rough. Now, if, and we sit this page through, last month, we were trying to figure out the percentage, twenty-five percent takes something, fifty percent takes others, it was gonna come out to about six hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars if, if our figures were right, if the estimation was right, as compared to, say, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. But now, it seems like we don't know that. And so, I have to see that the budget, we already had the problem, getting the budget we passed, I, I'm just concerned, you know, that, that, with the two hundred thousand dollars behind the, the cans, if, and then the billing for this would be starting in, what, January? And then, then I saw, I've heard some discussion that maybe billing at, on a six-month available, which would be before you receive all of it, or billing on a monthly basis, and then if you bill on a monthly basis, that's gonna consider a cost of mailouts additional. So, so I, I compare with you, Lieutenant, that, that the numbers that we've talked about, seems to me to be some snippets there, something, I mean, something there that, other than what we originally started when, which I thought the page through was gonna bring in total, everything initially, like one point six or one point eight, whatever, then we cut it back to, say, make revenue neutral, and then now it seems to me like there's something under that, and that's just what, basically flagged me is if we start working ahead, you know, that's why I was wanting to make a statement. Commissioner Wilder.
Right, the, the, I mean, folks are just discussing this in terms of the revenue brought in by the carts, but that's not the only, that's not the only, only fiscal line we discuss. I mean, folks are, are, we're getting the fact we've also discussed about entering into a franchise agreement with private haulers, that hopefully will bring in another hundred and fifty, or so thousand dollars. And also, I mean, there, there are measures and balances in place for underestimate. So right now, it looks like we might be looking at folks underestimating the sizes they need, but the, you know, the checks and balances there, if, if folks are consistently overflowing, we have the overflow bags available. We talked about giving out three overflow bags a year, but that'll, that'll handle the penalty occasional, you know, the occasional overflow. If folks are consistently overflowing, then they're either legally dumping and getting fined for it, and the fines, frankly, you know, we haven't set the fines yet, but I imagine any fines would be higher than, than it would cost to actually comply. And, or if they're not legally dumping and getting, and getting fined for that, then they're, then they're purchasing the overflow bag. And of course, the, the system we set up, the most cost-effective thing for anybody to do is to accurately assess their waste output and to get the, to get the appropriate size can, but it's, we're not, it's not just on an honor system, isn't there checks and balances in place? And those checks and balances include revenue, frankly, I think, with things like, like pots and overflow bags. So, so just because the carts bring in less than, than anticipated revenue, I think between fines for legal dumping and available overflow bags and a franchise agreement with private haulers, I still don't see why we would come close to hitting the same numbers. And again, if this, if we do bring in less revenue than anticipated because people, and this is, yeah, I get that, but if we bring in less revenue than anticipated because folks are recycling more and generating less waste, then that results in cost savings on the tailing, as in, yeah, it decreases our revenue, but it also decreases our operating expenses. And that's, and that's really the goal in the first place anyways, to decrease the city's long-term operating expenses and result in, in long-term cost savings for both the city and for repair. So worst-case scenario is we do a really good job, we're doing a really good job, and we see, we see the cost savings coming in sooner rather than later, even with, even with lower revenue.
Commissioner May.
I guess, Mayor, my question was, we didn't get back to it last week, I had asked a question about the cost of the containers, what the total cost of the containers was gonna be, would that be offset by any revenue generated by the program? As one thing we do know, based on the estimates, twenty-five percent would take the thirty-five gallon can, fifty percent would take the sixty-five gallon can, and twenty-five percent would take the ninety-two, ninety-five gallon can, depending on what percent we got. That's, I mean, seventy-five percent would be taking a can that would be less than, that would be four dollars less. So based on those numbers, would the cost of the two hundred and something thousand dollar estimated cost for the cans, and I, I guess I don't think that was a real number, maybe it was, would that result in a net decrease in revenues received? And the other part of that would be, and somebody can't say that, I understand, but with the cost of our, our low tipping fee that we pay the landfill compared to some of those communities that you're having, the basic throw program, which try, I think in those communities, it, it results in that paying a lot more tipping fee than we do. And then with the cost we receive from the recycling items that we take, and we get, based on the market fluctuates, and revenue we receive from our recyclables, what would be in that result be? And I don't know, I'm just asking a question. And it doesn't have to be today, and I can reduce that to right if, if that helps this out. So I can answer some of those questions. I mean, to the other communities, basic throw results in increased tipping fees? No, no, well, I didn't say, it resulted, it, it, that's a, some of those communities that the staff had looked at had, already had, and, and in those communities, it resulted in those communities, it was, it worked from what we saw. So that's what I meant. And then so we got, if, if that, if those same communities had lower tipping fees, would that still be as workable for those communities as, as it, as it is now? And that, that's what I'm, so, that's what, I guess, yeah, the, the question ahead with, with our low tipping fee, and whatever we get for our recyclables plus the cost of the containers, what the net result would be in terms of, would be increased revenue or decrease revenue? But that's, that's what I'm saying. And I mean, again, if I need to, I can reduce that to right if I move past.
We've already shared a lot of this information, information with you, but, you know, if you say anything is what I had, I had more to do. Of the seven thousand or so other communities that already do this, and, and different communities pay different tipping fees, they receive different recycling revenues, and there are different factors, but across the board, communities that do this see a ten to twenty percent reduction in our operational expenses. So if, if, because of our low tipping fees and wages and whatnot, if we see the, the most conservative low end of that, which is, you know, ten percent, let's say we see a ten percent reduction in our operating expenses, that, that amounts, and the system is, is costing about two million dollars a year, that ten percent amounts to, to two hundred thousand dollars. So, so even the most conservative estimate ahead is breaking even after overtime. Of course, those cost savings will then be ongoing, year after year after year. All the upfront expenses, we expect to cover within five years. So if we're conservatively, if we're, if we're breaking even within five years, then we're, then we're pulling in the black thereafter. And that's not including the, and that's not including the franchise, anticipated franchise, franchise revenue.
I think Cora's, I might have been confused on this, or?
I'm not sure.
The cost of the containers was gonna be, it's my article, but what if it, that was gonna be broken down over a five-year period? And then, then my question is, based on that, if we take five years of purchasing containers, would that drive the net of cost to operate, net operating cost up, down, or keep them at the same? That's what I'm saying, sort of, over that, that time for, for those costs of the containers, when we, when we look at, you know, here's the whole part of the, like, at the bottom line over there, that, that's what I was really trying to get at when I was asking that question, and it's really true, but, I mean, if somebody knows, that's, that's fine. But I guess my question really directed towards asking the state that they could come back, and I don't know who to do if it's public works and finance and city manager's office and, I don't mean to take their advice on that, but that's what I said, I can reduce to right, and, and, and we can, we can share it with everyone if you want.
Commissioner Turner.
I, I think, and, 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 Commissioner May, I mean, that is a very good question. I think that how you answer that question depends on what you view as the overall savings in terms of operational costs. You know, when we look at some information that the Environmental Protection Agency puts out, we see numbers of twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent savings in operational costs for the solid waste system. If you take Commissioner Wilder's low ball in the estimate of ten percent, even at that low amount, that's still the two hundred thousand dollars that it's costing for the can. So you see that, that those savings of ten percent, you're already covering expenditures for the cans, you see that annually. Staff has projected fifteen percent is what we can see within five years in terms of an annual operating cost, or operations cost decrease. And not to mention, you know, the increase in revenue for recycling, which staff projects to give. So I think it, it varies depending on what the projected percentage of savings would be, and so I, I don't know that there's a one, a one perfect answer out there, and it might be harder for staff to answer that unless they use what they've already projected.
I think the point is that even the most conservative estimate in terms of cost savings has us covering, covering the cost of the cans, as in the increase expenditure of the cans will be covered by cost savings, even if that is a conservative estimate.
Was that, was that in? I, I only got a sheet, and I just wanted to be sure that that is calculated, and just so we could, uh, turn it around.
I have a, I have a comment. To all the questions that are raised, we don't have, we don't, we don't have answers. You want to comment, excuse me?
No, I'm just agreeing.
Yeah, you disagree?
I agree.
Agreed, okay. We don't have those, those, those answers. And so it's, what it seems like to me that we're doing, and I'm a long-term minority minority, I think we're on, I think we're on too fast of a time frame. We, we pretty well, we pretty well know what we have right now, the, the systems in place right now, what they, what anticipated revenue. I think it's a, it's a stretch right now to think we're gonna be receiving a whole lot of money, or, I know we're trying to, get the environment to and come for that, but it, it seems to me we're better off staying where we, where we are right now. We may be too far down the road to do that, but I'm just, just, I don't know.
I'm there. I, I would disagree with the idea of these questions.
Unimportant.
The idea of these questions haven't been asked and answered. I mean, we've been asking and answering these questions for months. We've seen estimates from staff, those estimates are based on, I mean, thousands of other communities that have already done this on official reports, case studies, et cetera. We've seen lots and lots of evidence that this saves communities money over time. We've seen lots of it, and we've even made our own rather conservative estimates based on that information. We've seen a lot of evidence of that effect. And some folks claim that they haven't seen that evidence, and I guess I would chastise them for not looking at any of the, the documents that have been provided. I think it is our responsibility to make informed decisions and to read the information that comes in front of us. But nobody has produced any evidence at all that even the, I mean, basically, if seven thousand other communities can do this and save money, and we've provided lots of evidence that other people do save money and they do this, and we provided, staff produced estimates that we would save money and we do this, nobody's been able to explain why if everybody else can do it, we can't. I mean, what, nobody's been able to use any evidence that this will cost us money even though it saves everybody else money. We've seen lots of evidence that this does save money. We haven't seen any evidence that it, it results in long-term deficits. So I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the idea that these questions haven't been asked or answered. I mean, we've been discussing these estimates and these studies and, and these other communities for, for months now, which we must have evidence to save money. We haven't seen any evidence of the contrary. And so the folks insisting that, that this might cost us more money in the long run, I think we need to start, start backing that claim up and producing some evidence. I don't think there is any. We certainly haven't seen it. We've seen lots of evidence that this does result in long-term cost savings. If anybody feels that it won't, then they need to stop speculating and produce some actual, actual documentation.
Timing is so important when you're trying to do things, and it make the, the pain control concept understanding good. Timing to implement it, just put our basic question, and that's all.
Commissioner, hey, do you get what you mean?
I think we, we presented to the board a spreadsheet of a five-year implementation of some upfront capital cost for trucks and cans, but over those five years, it also assumed a reduction in the labor force by going fully automated, and I think, along with a reduction in landfill tipping fees. So over the five years, is kind of, you can't, can't really answer that question until year five, when you're fully implemented, the automated system, that's when you obtain your savings for your program, so, I just wonder.
Commissioner May?
Maybe mine is more concerned about methodology too, and let's say methodology, I mean, that's all, their, the staff is based this on estimates on how many people are gonna take certain types of cans, and then that's why for me, it's, it's hard for me to, it's like a hypothetical situation, and so therefore, from a methodology standpoint... And so therefore, from a methodology standpoint, if that formula is going to shift based on, as Commissioner Hennin noted earlier, if there's eighty percent of the respondents so far, and if there's four thousand, that's, you know, forty percent if you send out, that's the forty percent, eleven thousand forms asking for wood size that a homeowner or property overtake for their can. From a statistical analysis standpoint, it would be, if that's just coming in the rain, it is kind of raining, but talking in real mathematical terms here, the universe that we're studying is eleven thousand households, and we expect to get the majority of those in. And so it's not like a normal survey where people send out a survey, a random sample of a certain size, depending what they want to hit, you know, three percent to four percent margin of error. This is an actual, this is not a survey, this is an actual questionnaire, and we're going to get eleven thousand respondents or people who double respond, or I'm going to default to a sixty-five gallon container. So we know that at some point, whether we get all the responses in, or the city's going to make a decision for the ones that do it. And if we've got forty, or a little bit less than forty percent, I'm just going to round it up, just to make it easy, then that methodology used to make the first estimate was based on twenty-five percent of the free cans, fifty percent of the four-dollar cans, and twenty-five percent of the twelve-dollar cans. Well, that formula's already off based on the analysis, if we did an analysis of the forty, of the four thousand respondents so far, and it's coming in at eighty percent for the free cans. I mean, from a statistical speaking, I would say, I would dare say, if I could look it up, that the rest of the surveys coming in will be at that point unless something drastically changes, which could happen, of course. But if it stays that way, then it's already going to throw the financial estimates off. And that's really what I'm trying to get at by saying, with that in mind, we don't necessarily know future costs. You know, I mean, I guess we could get into doing net present value projections and really analysis, the analysis of the variance, and get into some deep quantitative methods, results for this, but we won't know until we get all the forms back, I guess. And when we get the forms back, then we'll know exactly what the real numbers will be in terms of how much cans that so does seem to work. And that's what I'm trying to get at in terms of, from a mathematical standpoint, we cannot project with any type of certainty if that formula changes. And it seems that, as Commissioner Hennin pointed out, the methodology that assumes initially to do forecasting, that revenue forecast is already off.
This completely ignores a number of facts, and I've already said, I guess I'll just keep repeating this until, until folks are taking into account. The revenue from the cans isn't what results in long-term cost savings, which is these reasons it can be an increase for recycling revenue. And it's also not the only source of revenue. There's fines for illegal dumping, overflow bags, and the franchise agreement are also sources of revenue. The estimates that were produced were at least loosely based on the total amount of garbage that the city sends to the landfill. And that is legitimate. We know how much trash we send to the landfill. And so I think it's reasonable for us to expect that, at least initially, folks are going to be producing that same amount of trash. But here's my point is that doesn't, the estimate is, the overall physical impact is a lot more dynamic than whether or not the carts bring in the anticipated amount of revenue. I mean, so let's, let's look at the different alternatives, and if somebody can suggest a different hypothetical, I'm open to suggestion. But one possibility is that folks actually intend to reduce their waste as much. Now, if that's true, then we will see decreased revenue. We'll also see rapidly decreased tipping fees and increased recycling revenue. And so the cost savings associated with folks going to the smaller can will come in sooner than expected. So yeah, the revenue will be lower, but the cost savings will be higher, so that's a wash. Alternatively, folks could be under anticipating and could have plans to illegally dump this trash. If that's the case, and even though we're not bringing in much cart revenue, we'll probably bring in even more revenue than initially anticipated because the fines would intentionally be prohibitively high. I mean, if the fines to illegally dump cost less than the cost of the can, then it's more cost effective to just illegally dump, right? If lots of folks are going to legally dump, that's oddly enough a source of revenue for the city again, because we're already prepared and budgeted to enforce that and to prosecute it. And it's relatively easy to identify and prosecute illegal dumpers. An alternative, if folks have underestimated and rely purely on overflow bag, I think folks are also ignoring the fact that that's also a source of revenue for the city. If there's a third possibility out there that I'm not seeing that results in a deficit, then I'm very open to suggestion, but I can't get an imagined one.
Well, I guess for me, another part of that, in that same mathematical equation or financial equation would be, what if people, I mean, we all know that people are going to recycle more. I can, I can say that, I had the benefit of being on the commission when the city did recycle, being able to be one of the three people to vote in favor of supporting recycling programs, I've seen it go from not having a recycling program to doing a recycling program toward the other day. And at one point, there was a, I don't think we had full-time coordinator, but a part-time recycling coordinator in public works. And you were here part-time with Ms. Nelson, Ms. Nelson was here, right? And, and we had a coordinator that'd go to schools and businesses and go to social clubs, service clubs, and promote recycling program, and we saw a little bit of an increase at that time. And then, for whatever reason, the majority of the commission at the time, I don't know if you tried to keep it, and we lost our three to vote to keep a recycling coordinator. Because at the time, there just wasn't a significant enough increase in recycling even with the coordinator to get people to recycle. Now, that was a while ago, and maybe now people are being more conscious. I believe the generational changes that we're seeing, that we will see more recycling over, over generations, hopefully, through recycling education. And so for me, I don't know that people will recycle more or less, I hope they do. The one positive though is the sustainability coordinator position, that person can go out and still can educate people on recycling and they're producing what they sense of that, though. But just my concern is if only a few people, most people take a free hands, will those people recycle? I hope they do, I mean, I'm really included, and so I think it's good to have it debate, and the good thing about it, nobody's up here making mad at each other, I believe nobody's going to, you know, be, have bad feelings, at least, I don't, I don't think, I'm sure of it. So those are just things I just want to get at. And while I did receive the material, I just, that made me think, well, what about this assumption or this thought? And that's what I'm trying to kind of break down. And I think it will help is that, if once the commission can get something as a proposal, it will sort of help move, if that's what the majority of the commission wants to do, I think that will help move that forward and get accomplished what, if that's what we already want to do. I may, still may be against it, but at the same time, I think that will help get a lot of that fleshed out. So I thank everybody for the.
Just going to tell you, you mentioned something about the free, free small price container, and then you mentioned about extra bags. Now, has there been any decision made on the part of the commission about how many free bags it's going to give to each household? That'd be a consideration too, it seems to me.
I think we agreed on twelve about three months ago.
Pardon me?
And we agreed on twelve per year.
Twelve per year?
Yeah, and we were consulting on that three, three months ago.
That would be factoring in also the cost, right?
Since we don't have, I mean, outside of just personally the bag, I mean, outside of that, what would be the cost of this?
I'm sure.
Revenue. Commissioner May, and I know Mr. Wilder and myself, and Commissioner Hennin, and I know the mayor as well, you know, one of the things that we all agree on, but, you know, it would be nice to have this down and writing, and perhaps it might behoove us to, as we move forward, go way through and just talk about these parameters right now too, so that, so that we're on the same page with staff. And I know Ms. Nelson probably has some questions, as she mentioned earlier, that she, she has. So I want, hopefully, we can try to answer some of those as we go through this and just make sure that we're all on the same page. I mean, and I'll start off just, you know, by throwing out the pricing structure that we agreed on, is a free can for the thirty-five gallon container. You can choose any size recycling container, go with that. Four dollars per month for the sixty-five gallon container, of course, along with a recycling container. And then twelve dollars a month for the ninety-five gallon container. And I do think that until we get a final proposal in terms of a bid proposal from somebody, we don't know that exactly, you know, this specific size of the container could vary about eight gallons or something like that. But in general, those are good safeguards to use. So those are the main course of the, that, in terms of the cost of what it would be for citizens. I didn't gather, I know the mayor, county, but we have three members who are in support of letting people use their old cans for yard waste. So there's another parameter that I know has a number of citizens concerned, you know, it might not be completely addressed, but hopefully it's clear now, that that's kind of be the way that we could use that.
Commissioner Druck could clarify that. Would it also be acceptable for yard waste to be disposed of in paper bags?
I think there's those types of bradles bags that we can as well. They can put in the trash can, the handle position.
Just wanted to clarify that. But no, but no plastic?
I'm not thinking about the city providing the paper bags.
Right.
Just folks would have that option.
Staff question has been discussed a lot. So yard waste could not be in plastic, but it could be in paper. The individual.
Can I, we talked to the person who, he grinds our yard waste, and the big concern is they don't want it to be contaminated with plastic or garbage.
Of course.
He doesn't like the grass leavings because that doesn't break down like a wood product or, leaves are okay, but he doesn't like the fact that people bagged the grass. Right now, it's all on landfill, so it's not a big issue. But when we said, we allow the garbage cans to be used, a lot of people still will bag their grass and dump it in the garbage can. And he said, well, we have a contract with him, and I think it's up this year, we'll need to put that in our future contracts, that grass, leaves, and limbs will be what's our waste stream and our yard waste. Apparently, grass doesn't work real well in composting, because he uses it for mulch. So he sells that to the public, and the grass doesn't work as well if there's a lot of grass. So one thing to consider sometime is do we ban grass flipping from the yard waste? If it becomes problematic in our contract, but this year we're banning.
That's curious, because I, we compost grass and use it in, in alternate, never had a problem with it. Oh, I can't imagine why that would be a problem, but fair enough. So to clarify, so in terms of yard waste, we're talking about giving folks three options for disposing yard waste. One is to put it in their old trash cans, loose in their old trash cans. The other is to set it out loose to the curb, in manageable piles.
During leaf season.
During leaf season.
It's scheduled coming up, you know, next week.
And the other is to, and the other is to set it, is to give folks out there, set it out in paper garbage bags, and we'll pick up all of that for free, which obviously you know. So that's one parameter clarified. I guess as long, I think, I think Commissioner Turner got us off, if we start by clarifying the price structure, I guess that's the place to start. Start clarifying around here some time. In terms of recycling, and I know a lot of this has been done, and has been said before, but I think it's just good to say it all at once, to get it all down at once. Recycling is free regardless of the amount of recycling set out. We, and I just, from my notes and recollection.
But if it doesn't fit into the cart size that they order?
That's a, whenever our red bins overflow, then we set out the overflow in a cardboard box or something next to the red bins, and it all gets picked up and recycled together. Is that, I assume that's not, that's not a problem?
Cardboard boxes are not, in our ordinance, are not considered proper containers, so.
Well.
Because when it rains, and you try to pick it up and fall apart, it creates a mess.
Sure.
So.
What do we do about overflow recycling? That's a, mark that down as a.
People may be use their.
For my own satisfaction now, whatever Commissioner Wilder's saying, you all, if you don't agree, then I'm saying, don't disagree, I'm assuming that everybody will.
Yeah, I'll pipe up if I don't agree.
For the most part, I'm just going over something we've already discussed.
I'm going to have to compare it with.
Sure. Now, if I bring up anything, anything new, I'll also make a point to.
Yeah.
Folks, obviously, folks will, will obviously need to provide folks with some very clear information on what is and isn't recyclable. Is that, is that something we'll be able to print on the cans or here at the can somehow?
No, no, we can't do that on the cans. But what we thought about is when we deliver the recycling cans and the garbage roll-out cans, to put a brochure of what we recycle to remind everybody what's recyclable. One of the, one thing we get a lot of questions about is Kroger bags, the bags your newspaper comes in, any type of bag, plastic bag, it fogs up the machine and lessens it. And that's the one big thing that they're saying, please let everybody know that we cannot recycle bags. And so to reemphasize, what we do take is to put a brochure in the recycling cart to touch base with everybody, because it may be a while since they've received a brochure, but to put a brochure in the recycling cart upon delivery, and we'll put the overflow bags in the garbage cart that we deliver, that may be a way to get, and get all the river. That's one thought. One of the things I may add that might help citizens, not just, you know, with the pay-to-throw system, but in general, is, you know, recycling centers that send our recyclables to the Lexington may not want the plastic bags to recycle there, but at your grocery store, you can recycle those bags, you can drop them off, and they will take care of that. So it might be smart for us moving forward also, you know, not only anticipating, you know, what's specific to our system, but if we don't offer that, where can citizens go to get their thing cared about? That would be a good thing to have, not only with the pay-to-throw, but to have now. If I've got these recyclers, like Trump, so do I go with that, you suppose, you know? And I know that we could probably contact, I'm sure you've got a number of resources, and the county's got a number of resources as well, and if we could pull those resources to find locations for services like that, that, you know, our recycling center wouldn't make, or, you know, maybe grass leavings or something, then that would certainly help the citizens. Again, not only now, not only with the pay-to-throw system, but in general, in terms of being more conscious of their waste, and that would ultimately also lead to savings.
Another question. What, what my family expects to do, we already keep garbage cans alongside our house, and a lot of, a lot of houses in South Franklin do. So we're expecting to have a garbage can alongside our house and a recycling bin alongside our house. Currently, we keep a small garbage can in our kitchen to collect our household, household waste, and when it fills up, we take it out, put it in the garbage can. When trash time comes, we take that garbage can down to the street. What we expect to do with the recycling carts outside is to actually hold on to our red recycling bin, that the city's already provided us, to keep that inside, and when it fills up recyclables, go out, dump it in the cart, and take that cart down to the street. That strikes me as a, as a pretty appropriate use of the, of the red recycling bins that we already have. If there's an overflow situation, could we set that red recycling bin to the curb? If there's an overflow situation, could we set that red recycling bin to the curb? I mean, I know it can't be picked up via automation.
There's no reason we could not pick it up. I would imagine, since we're providing the roll-out cart for free.
Right.
That most people would utilize that when they put out their garbage.
Sure.
I guess the only downside of letting them continue using that smaller 18 gallon, is if you ever got to the point where you're fully automated with that one truck.
Sure.
That truck can't pick up that small 18 gallon container. So someone would have to physically have to get out of the vehicle and dump it. So.
Sure.
That's the downside, long-term, but initially, that would be.
In terms of the short-term, and in terms of, in terms of growing pains, I think, and this is just a note for the, you know, for the commission and the public, but I mean, I think we all need to be prepared to expect some, some growing pains, and be prepared to cut folks a lot of slime, for the, you know, for the first year in particular.
As with anything.
Sure.
Not just garbage, but as with anything, if something's new.
So I think that addresses recycling questions. And to, just for the clarification of parameters we've already discussed, we will continue to pick up oversized items, like chairs, and things that come up, like the garbage cans. We're prepared to take those up in limited numbers for free.
All right, thank you.
So that's an easy one, right?
Yes.
Parameter, parameter set. In terms of the occasional inevitable overflow, the parameters we've discussed are providing each household with 12 free overflow bags per year. And we've also discussed having four, four annual free pickup days. Christmas, spring, fall, and winter, where anybody can set out half their house to the curb, and it'd be so easy to come pick it up for free.
Those are four occasions.
I believe that's what, is that what we said in the.
Formally?
What I mailed out?
That would be how to do it. I think that we decided on maybe two, and maybe a more.
Maybe, well, I mean, this is our current conversation, let's clarify.
It'd be nice still to do it the last week of every month, so people who own apartments, which there's a lot of them in the city, that apartment owners could still dump everything out, put their turnover. And everybody knows, and you have pickers, they could come up and down the street, pick up half the stuff that our garbage people won't have to pick up. But maybe illegal would people do it. People are also going to illegally dump. They still do it. But it'd be nice if everybody knew, and it's consistent. Because half the resistance to change, but there's also no consistency that's going to happen. And if I owned 40 apartments in the city, I would like to know at the end of every month, before I had to give it to my inspection following month, that I could have it all cleaned out the last week of every month. And at the first of the next month, I could have my inspector come in and inspect my apartment for the next period.
I am not finding, I can't find my copy of the frequently asked questions one of the already mailed out. I've got the, I've got one of the draft. Thanks, Jeff. I'll check and make sure. Is that the exact number of pickup days that has not been, has not been committed to paper? I'm still, I mean, when we discussed a few months ago what to do about this, the first conclusion we came to was that, rather than having free pickup days, we would offer the pre-overflow bag. And so that way, the overflow, the folks experience, wouldn't have to hit on particular dates, it would just have the flexibility to handle it throughout the year. So we were talking about the overflow bags instead of free pickup days. Since then, the concept of adding some free pickup days has re-entered the discussion, and that's, I think that's, I think that's fine, as long as we're offering all of these pre-overflow bags. I still, I still feel like it would kind of defeat the purpose to go to, to free monthly pickup, and importantly, it still makes sense. A suggestion I would make to, because we're, suggesting our landlords, we have, we have a house that we ran out. And the way our lease works, and the way I would suggest, I would suggest landlords handle this like any other utility bill. But it's, you know, it's not uncommon in a lease for landlords to take a security deposit, and for folks, and then to use that security deposit to cover any cleaning expenses after somebody, if they move out and leave the place clean and whatnot, they give their full security deposit back, that the landlord has to pay to do a lot of cleanup, and that comes out of the security deposit before it's returned. As far as I'm concerned, access, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that applying that security deposit to afford an overflow for us would actually be perfectly appropriate. I think that doesn't need to be a problem for landlords and tenants, it's just, I think that could be addressed without monthly pickup days. But this sounds like something that we do need to, in terms of, there's a parameter we've already discussed and agreed on, that sounds like something that does still need some consensus. Are we, are we still agreeing on 12 free overflow bags per year?
Maybe just, you may know, that the city's going to provide those, and that's three dollars, you didn't figure three dollars a bag, right?
Well, that's.
It costs, it costs the city to provide, if the city is providing 12 bags for every household, there's left, and we figure between 10 and a half, 11,000 households. And we're figuring it's going to cost the city three dollars a bag?
No.
How much, how much, how much would it cost? I'm just trying to get it certain. I just want to make sure we know what we're talking about. That if, that is, wouldn't be, I'm trying to just figure here, if you figure 11,000 households, 12 bags, and 32,000 bags, and say, whatever the cost is, a dollar or one have you, and you say we're going to do it, provide that every year. Okay, now, that's another thing, just, just what we're saying now, that's another cost. That's, when it's, when it's not recovering the cost of everything anyway, that's all, I'm sitting over here because I don't support that, you know, but I just, if you work your way through it, just remember that there are certain, some things to consider in that section. How much money you want to have, and when we, I would talk about some more things later. I'm sorry, I just want to say that to you all.
One of the things that the commission can do, and determine what that cost would be, is, I don't know how much a bag can hold, but if it can hold 20 pounds of trash, or 10 pounds of trash, then, you know, you would multiply the number of, you know, 10 pounds times however many bags, and then divide about 2,000 to put it into tons, and then multiply times your tipping fee. Because I doubt that the plastic bags are going to contain recyclables, because soon, you know, presumably, those would be put into the recycling cans.
In terms of the actual cost of the bag, we have no exactly, but it's, I mean, I think it's safe to say that it'll cost us, it'll cost us pennies, pennies per bag. It's like, it's definitely not going to cost us three dollars or a dollar for the access.
I'm sure three dollars comes from a railway change for bags, but whatever you call it, you know, something like that, 130,000 calories, have something, whatever you call it.
I think, I think the cost of the bags to the city is pretty negligible. I mean, we're literally talking about pennies a bag. Although, one thing that I don't, one thing that I think we failed to note in the mail that we sent out, are the size of the bags. We're talking about kitchen bags, right? So we're talking about, like, 12, 12, 10 gallon to 12 gallon?
They go up to 32 gallon, so there's all sorts of sizes, but standard, what we've talked to other communities, they offer a 32 gallon overflow bag, which would, if it's just right, it would fit into 32 gallon roll-out containers.
Well.
Or you might build a 10 one now.
Well, we had, we had discussed this in terms, in a previous discussion, we discussed this in terms of the, in terms of the bags that are pictured here on the survey, as in the, you know, overflow kitchen bag.
The picture just kind of represents, in your kitchen.
Right.
What people typically generate out of their kitchen or household garbage. We related it to what, how many of those kitchen bags would fit in the different size of the roll-out containers. But as far as the overflow bags, the communities we've talked to typically offer 32 gallon overflow bag, which would be, not a kitchen bag, I think the kitchen bag would work with 18 gallon size.
Well, that finds us into a corner, because we've been discussing this, we've been discussing this in terms of, in terms of three dollars for a smaller sized bag. If we're, if we're talking about charging three dollars for a bag that can fit into an entire can, then the bags, then the overflow bags are actually much cheaper than the carts, which is counterproductive.
We haven't ordered any can, any bag size, or we've not advertised any can or bag size today, so I guess that's another.
We haven't advertised the bag size, but we have advertised the bag, a bag rate, and the, and the discussion we've had, and I, I mean, I don't have to go back and pull up, you know, audio or video recording, because I think it's a long time to dig through. We've definitely discussed it in the past in terms of something equivalent to kitchen bags, or equivalent to the bags per can ratio that we've seen reflected here on the car request form. And the three dollars for a bag makes sense within that paradigm, but it's counterproductive if the alternative to, the alternative to, to an entire can size is just three dollars. And that, that makes, like, take, for example, for example, if somebody has a medium, a median, if somebody put out 95 gallons of trash, then, if somebody put out 95 gallons of trash a month, and they could just go with, instead of paying 12 dollars a month for that, they could just get the free can, and put out two, two, three dollar, 30 gallon overflow bags, and put out the same amount of trash for six dollars a month. Unless the bags are priced.